...follow this meeting of the school board of Menominee area school district. Who orders? Can you please take your oath?
Penny Bersta.
Here.
Tommy Yousef.
Here.
Heather Tannenbaum.
Here.
Danielle Paulson.
Here.
Amy Riddle Swanson.
Yes, I'm a lot B.
John Saboda.
Here.
David Steyer.
Here.
Jim Swanson.
Here.
Tricia Thompson.
Here.
Wonderful. We have a forum to conduct business. And as you notice, Amy Riddle Swanson is with us via the remote telephone connection. Join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the religion of justice for all.
Excuse me. Our mission statement. The school board, or school district of Menominee area by embracing the unique needs and using the strengths of our diverse community is dedicated to preparing all students to become lifelong learners, caring individuals, and responsible citizens. Thank you. First item is to approve the agenda. Does anyone have any changes they wish to make to the agenda? Hearing none, agenda will proceed as listed. Recommendations and commendations.
Okay. Gretchen Christiansen? Are you here? Come on up. I mean, you have the NAP 4H Club here. Please join us. Oh, come on up, guys. That's awesome. Wow, you've got a big crew. That's awesome. Come on up, guys. Come on, everybody. Come on. It's not scary, I promise you. This is pretty painless.
Penny doesn't bite.
Not too hard. The Board of Education of the school district of Menominee area recognizes Gretchen Christiansen and the NAP 4H Club for their hard work at NAP Elementary School. The group has worked hard to make NAP School beautiful and inviting. Thank you, guys. (Applause).
All right, I have another crew to call up. Leah Miller. There you are then. Charles Minnick. John Kitzman.
Yes.
Well, for your roles in representing the school district of Menominee area at the Wisconsin Social Studies Boot Camp and for your follow-up work to roll out the new social studies standards within the district, we present you with this commendation. So. Charles. Thank you, Charles, for your... All right, next order of business is to highlight on you.
It's always great to see so many students come to a board meeting, so if the students from the NAP Elementary Student Council could come to the front. And it's my pleasure to introduce elementary principal from NAP, Kristen Humphrey. And Mrs. Humphrey and the students, go ahead and take it away.
All right, thank you for having us here this evening. The student council is led by Mrs. Dobry, our kindergarten teacher. She's unable to be here tonight, but the students are all ready. They have their parts and they're set to share everything that they do as student council members. Good evening. We'd like to verify your identity ourselves too, and what we believe in. We are open to different grades, are the bottom three for both grades. James is in fourth grade. Amy is in fourth grade. And Oliver from third grade, Hannah's sophomore year in fourth grade. We are NAP Elementary Student Council representatives for the school year. We ran an election and appear to be... Each month we will get together and choose a product activity for all the students and we will participate in. Last month, everyone got a chance to show their school spirit by wearing a tie or two to the school. Other product activities we have planned for this year include wearing the colors and having a party.
Another activity that we help out is popping the popcorn once a month on popcorn parties. Also, the state coaches popcorn football practice. The money raised from family popcorn will be donated to the American Red Cross and the Dominican County League Society. At the end of the school year, this year, our school will also be participating in two community service activities in December. The NAP Student Council members will be collecting used change for our family. The used change that is collected will be used to help purchase presents for a needy family in the county. We hope shop for the gifts and wrap them. It helps the family carry their business.
In February, we will be collecting food for detecting certain food cancer in the family. We provide out food into the sandbags throughout the year. We would also like to help with our collection. Our goal is for every student to bring out one food item to help fill our empty boxes.
During the school year, we'll also work with these companies performing scans and making videos to share messages for our whole school to know during our whole school year.
I think it's on me.
Well, maybe you can give us an overview of what the video said.
It's about hyper-active sports and it's good and heavy.
That's a nice message.
Throughout the year, student council members will also be playing lots of games that are safe by families and rock and roll. In January, we will have a box out contest for the last day in the most box out in twenty five hours to the year. Last Thursday, we met and had breakfast with Ms. Coler and we were able to share what we want to talk about first. And we were also able to tell our elders to enjoy the school year. Other things that we will be doing this school year include going to the little book library located in a bus circle with new books and playing the barrels five in front entrance full of flowers and stuff. Thank you for allowing us to share what we have planned out for the school year. Do you have any questions for us?
I have a question. Is it for all grades at NAP?
Yes, yes, it is for all grades.
How often do you guys meet?
Uh, sometimes.
Couple of times a month.
Can you guys squeeze together so we can get a good picture of her, Tony? Thanks, crew.
All right, thanks. (Applause).
All right, moving on. Do representatives from each group?
Okay, so for athletics this month, girls cross country won the first Big Rivers Conference title since 1981, and boys cross country had Patrick Schwartz represent them at the WIA State Meet. Girls swim and dive had two people represent Menominee at the WIA State Meet. Millie Lausen took fifth in the 200 and second in the 500, and Melanie Greenwin placed 11th in diving. And there's a signing day this Wednesday at the high school for Kylie Hogan for basketball and Jace Christine for baseball.
For some of our clubs and extracurricular activities, DECA, NHS, and FBLA teamed together to host our annual trigger scanning event on Halloween where students went door-to-door collecting candy. They donated over 1,000 pounds of non-perishable food items to stepping stones. DECA recently attended the Emerging Leadership Conference in the Wisconsin Dells. Fourteen students attended the conference and had a great time networking with over 1,000 students from across the state. For instance, for this school year, they are set to have a record-breaking number of student participants. There's an orchestra concert at the high school auditorium tomorrow, Tuesday, November 13th at 7:00 PM. This event is free. There's also an orchestra night at Colvers on November 19th. Please come up and attend the Menominee Orchestra Department. The annual list of Menominee pageant is coming up on Wednesday, November 28th, in the high school auditorium. Tickets are $3 and sports passes are not accepted. 100% of the money raised is donated to charity. And the annual high school play Hooked Hearts opened this past weekend and it will perform again this coming weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Last weekend, Science Olympia placed second in Belleville, just four points behind Marquette.
Okay, and then like last month, we've had many different representatives from colleges visit the high school to talk with our seniors, including reps from Michigan Tech, Concordia College, and UW Superior. Parent-teacher conferences were held last Thursday, November 8th, and are being held tonight again. We have an MHS alumni coming to speak to juniors and seniors about studying abroad in college next week. And today was the Veterans Day Assembly, and MHS alum Jason Church came to speak to students. All veterans were honored at the assembly. You guys have any questions we can answer?
I just note that the FAFA had a fundraiser too for stepping stones and raised over $3,000 a couple weeks ago too, so a lot of good community service stuff going on.
Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. Quite a time for athletics, huh? Yeah, stayed up pretty long. Okay, next up is community communications. The school board welcomes members of the community to make comments to the board about the joys and concerns that we have about our school. Please remember that our agendas are full, and in fairness to others, you must limit your time to three minutes. If you have an issue that requires a response or action, please speak to the teachers or principal first because they are the ones who can best help. Also remember that civility is required. And I have no request at this time. And seeing none, we move on. Review the revenue and expenditure.
Okay, first off, we'll take a look at the October revenues report. For the month of October, for the general fund 10 revenue, we've received in $142,418.54. In our fund 21, our gift donation account, we've received in $53,143.19. And then our fund 27, Special Education Fund, we have not received in any revenue at this point. Our first special education aid payment is due here in November, so that will get updated once we receive that. And grant quarter, or quarterly grant claims were submitted, and once we receive those funds, that will be updated as well for both fund 10 and 27. Does anybody have any questions on the revenue report? The next report we'll take a look at is the expense by function report. For the month of October, the general fund 10 operating budget, overall, our year-to-date percent spent is at 17.64% compared to 17.14 at the same time last year. So expenditures are up a little bit, but pretty close to normal. If you take a look at the $430,000 general tuition payments, you'll notice that percentage is higher compared to years past. And as I had mentioned in previous meetings, EPI made a lot of account code changes, and one of those changes that we've made was summer school is now getting coded to the $430,000 function where it hadn't been used past, so that's why there's an increase there. For fund 27, our Special Education Fund, we are slightly lower than the same time last year. We're at 7.6% compared to 8.16. And then fund 50, our food service account, we're slightly higher at 11.06% compared to 9.57%. And then if we look at the next report, that's a breakdown of our expenses by object. So again, for the month of October, our fiscal year-to-date percent is up some. It's at 16.09% compared to 14.41% at the same time last year. And some of that is build timing. Last year, there was some one-time project costs. And keep in mind, I'll have to update the current monthly notes to agree with the new school safety grant. We're starting to expend items for that grant where that wasn't in last year's budget, so it's expected that things will be a little bit higher. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you very much. Board members, superintendent communications.
I attended the middle school Veterans Day program on Friday, and it was very well done. Mr. Larson put a lot of time and a lot of effort in, as well as the orchestra band and choir departments. It was a great honor to our veterans and our community and our active, you know, our active military members. They really did a great job.
Anyone else? I attended the high school play, and I thought it was remarkable in that the play was actually written by our students. And I thought that was just wonderful. They basically not only acted on the play, but they actually wrote the play. It was pretty impressive.
Okay, just a few things. Of course, like every month, there's opportunities for professional development listed for board members. Also, the exhibit for Policy 441.25, Student Conduct on School Buses, that was just updated to make it current. No major changes there. And then also, I submitted a report for the board review regarding recent spending on music program within the school district. And I attended the Veterans Day program at Wakanda, and similar to the program at the middle school, it was very well done. Lori Weinstein, second grade teacher, and Heidi Anderson, fourth grade teacher, did a marvelous job planning it, and the students really did a nice job recognizing our veterans. And I'm not ashamed to say that I can't get through those without a few tears. It's just, it's really neat, I think, that our kids have that opportunity. So thank you to all the staff members.
Any questions? Okay, moving on. The monthly employment report.
So this is a standard report. You can see the updates. No big surprises here.
Okay, any questions? All right, moving on. Consent agenda. Action to approve the consent agenda. Do you have a motion? Still move?
One second.
Does anyone want to, I didn't ask if anyone wants to pull anything from the consent Okay. Motion passes.
Amy will be happy to know you're vote registered just fine.
Yeah, I was able to click on it about yet.
Great.
Okay, moving on. Personnel consent agenda. Does anyone want to pull anything from that? Move to a group.
One second.
All right.
Two seconds. Tell it to each other.
Motion passes. Discussion items. A, update on the K5 science resource implementation.
Okay, so for our first report tonight, Mr. Segwin is going to do the report, and I believe we have a few, couple teachers here that help you tonight.
Yep. So Rebecca Minnick and Scott Weber, two of our elementary teachers, are here to assist with the presentations. So Rebecca and Scott, if you want to come on up. The report that I have, I'm just going to hit a few of the highlights and then really turn things over to both Ms. Minnick and Mr. Weber to talk about what is occurring in the classroom. As you recall, last school year, our elementary staff spent time studying some different resources for science, and unanimously made the recommendation that we should move forward with FOS science, which stands for Full Option Science System. It's a modular system that really breaks down into three areas of earth science, physical science, and life sciences. So what's on the screen in front of you tonight is the way those units are laid out as far as the scope and sequence that we're following through the year, broken up or mashed up by our trimesters. It's the first year with the implementation, so staff had the opportunity to come in in July and receive some initial professional development around the resources. We have follow-up in our October PD Day, and then we'll have some follow-up thinking as we adjourn. So, and if they can look as far as that is concerned. One of the things that I'm pretty excited about as a curriculum director, in my role, is when we took a look at some different ways in which to lay out our day to make sure that our students are getting some updated instruction in science, but also regular construction in science. We shared some information on that previously, but I'm happy to report that we also have some buildings, and Scott can talk a little bit about this when he gets in. And they're trying some creative scheduling pieces to create some time for science on a daily basis and trying that out. As far as the way their lessons are laid out, and this is kind of where my portion of this kind of draws to a close, with our new science standards in Wisconsin, they're based off of the next generation science standards. And I'll talk a little bit more about our essential understandings for our content areas, but in the area of science, they're organized around three different concepts with exposure or observation of natural phenomena as the background. But those ideas are our science and engineering practices, which is really the act of doing science, disciplinary core ideas. You think back to our own construction in elementary science, the facts that we kind of learn, and then cross-cutting concepts is the idea of tying it all together. So that's really the backdrop of the lessons that our staff have. So I'm not going to go through this. That'll come forward when we talk about essential understandings, but really to kind of turn things over to Ms. Minnick and Mr. Weber to talk a little bit about what they see on a daily basis.
Absolutely. Thanks for having us tonight. We're really happy to be here. I'm Rebecca Minnick. I teach fourth grade at Downsill. And as I was thinking about what I wanted to tell you today with what we've done so far with FOS, I have just three things I want to touch on. First of all, just the student engagement. They're super excited for science. My science time is the last 30 minutes of the day, 30 to 40, and they just get so excited and look forward to it all day. At the end of the day, I always have them write a sentence in their planner, something they've learned and enjoyed from the day, and it's a science day, it's always something about science to bring home to their parents. So they really look forward to that, and I can tell they're engaged and excited about it. Secondly, I just wanted to tell you, just looking at FOS and as a curriculum, I view it as an experience for the kids. They really come into it, and I noticed that students remember experiences, and FOS provides that, really memorable experiences through their investigations. Students are able to recall the concept because of the experience attached to it. So for example, last week, we were learning about physical weathering, and we had to put rocks in the canvas to tap on and shake it for two minutes, and it was really loud. But knowing kids, they loved it, and now they know what physical weathering is because they went back to that experience. And through every investigation, FOS provides that, and kids love it. And then thirdly, it's just teacher prep time. A couple of times sharing from my building and myself, it is a lot to prepare, but it's worth it because I see how engaged the kids are. And I know as the years go on, after, you know, it's not the first year, and we have more time, I'll be more familiar with each investigation as it comes up, know the materials that I need, be able to plan more ahead of time. So that's something I'm, you know, working on, and other teachers are too. One thing, teaching fourth grade, upper elementary, I've been trying to think of ways to get kids involved with some of that prep. So actually, on the first day of an investigation, I introduced, you know, what the investigation's going to be about, and then we write our focus question in our notebook, and I know Scott brought some notebooks as an example. And then I took out my FOS boxes of materials for the module, and we go through them together, and I have kids come up with the materials out. And then we did that today, actually, and I talked about the materials we've used before, what ones are new, and it provides for a great time for kids to investigate before the investigation. So it comes back on prep time, it gives this kind of ownership of their learning. I've done, I've played around with that a little bit as well. But because it's the first year, we'll keep trying new things, and, but overall, it's great. The kids love it, so.
And I can speak to a piece about having science locations at River Heights at Downsill, which is a one-section school, but we have a two-section school. And I know in years past, the fifth grade at River Heights has had a vocational schedule with a teacher doing science, a teacher doing social studies, and a teacher doing movement location, what I need for, we need, there's, there's the BLA help and for math also. And when I was discussing this with my grade-level team, we kind of played with that idea, if we could try that as well. And so we were fortunate enough to get everybody on one side to go to try it because it is, it can be, it is a lot of work, and it might not be everybody's idea that they want to. So I teach the science and, obviously, and I have some science journals here that my students have put together or are working on so far. And I'll just pass these out. You can pass them around. And I've worked with FOS before, but I'm really grateful that our district decided to go with FOS because it's so well organized, everything is there, and I think that we can agree that... And I think that as we can agree that it was, it just had this kid-friendly, yet a real professional look to it. And something else that I appreciate about the board is it really emphasizes the use of science people have there. And so, we are using the big words in the classroom and the kids love it. There was a girl that was gone just the other day and sent her a scientific book that she wrote when she was at home. Sent it to her teacher. And so, my colleagues sent that to me and I'm like, you know, it's on the desperation and compensation and presentation that we're talking about, things are, are working, so. But also, I guess, besides just the FAWSS and the great activities that they provide, I also like to kind of, you know, especially, I feel like I have some of the freedom to bring my own pieces like at the Dollar Trade, we get these sponge animals, we soak in water, maybe increase in size by six hundred percent. Anyway, one of the things that FAWSS has with students doing is finding mass. And so, I got a few of those and we found the mass before, we found the mass during, and found the mass when we felt that it was completely grown. So, there's just a lot of different extra connections that you can make that are fun for the students. And then they go ahead. I know some of them go on to use those on their own.
So, purpose obviously coming tonight is just to give you an update. It's year one of the implementation. As we go forward near our commitment to supporting the staff, I know I've had the pleasure of being able to now be in every single grade level in, across all of our elementary buildings over the last, basically, three weeks to observe a lesson at each grade level, some grade levels more than once. To not only see how things are going, but then also to help identify what are some of those next steps as far as support for implementation in the lessons that we're learning along the way. So, is there any questions for any of us if you have to take one?
You talked about materials and setup and prep time.
Yeah.
Are the materials that you use year over year pretty much ones that you don't have to replace or do you have to replenish as you go through the science projects?
I believe some of them have to be replenished. And I know somewhere online, someone told me to just write down as we go through each investigation, if we're getting low on something or something ran out. So, for next year, we can prepare for that. But a lot of it, I mean, like the container that I was talking about, things like that, I can wash them again, so.
I just want if the kids shook the rocks too much, if you have any thoughts.
We'll be doing rocks, yeah.
There are some consumables with FAWSS science.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else have a question?
Well, thank you so much. And coming from a former science teacher, it makes me really happy to hear about all the great work you're doing, so.
If I could just comment also on the science rotation. You know, the time of the science and social studies per day is a lot of time with the rotation. If this kids get 25 minutes of science every day, 25 minutes of social studies every day, which is really, I think, super, with a real big kind of aging rotations, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Minnick. It's great. Next up is a report on essential understandings of history, curriculum, and instruction.
So, if you recall, one of the goals that we had for this year as a district was to better identify the essential understandings in our different curricular areas. Certainly, the state standards give us a lot of guidance, but when you look at the list of standards and you try to anticipate that each of those standards is going to be covered with the same amount of fidelity and effort and expertise, it really simply is, you're not going to have that. You're not going to have the same commitment to each part of the curriculum. And in looking at the curriculum and working at the department levels, Brian could talk a little bit about it. Trying to identify some essential understanding is something that we've been working on. And really, we started with our English language arts and our math. And I really appreciate the work that our curriculum teams and our teaching instructional staff have done. Because I think, like anything, anytime you're setting goals, if you can identify where it is you're trying to go and you can map out where you're going, you're going to get there a lot more, a lot more efficiently and in a lot of cases, a lot more effectively. So, Brian, if you could just talk a little bit about the essential understandings and share with the board the work that's been done.
So, as Joe indicated, this work goes back a while. We appreciate having a goal focused on this this year. The information is contained within the presentation. I'm not going to go through every single slide in here, happy to answer any specific questions that we go through. But this continues to be a work in progress. What you're seeing tonight is not a completed project of all of our content areas, but our goal is for each content area to have some similar guiding documents like what are contained within this presentation. As you recall, we had a team that went to the Model Schools Conference this past summer. And when we talked about, you know, really the three Rs that came out of that conference with a commitment to rigor, relevance, and relationships, recognizing that it's a balance. And at any point in time, we may be emphasizing one element of that a little bit more than another, but really taking a look at how do we support a whole child? When a student leaves Monomy year after year after year, what are the things that we're committed to doing as we go through? So, you know, Joe did a nice job of talking about what essential understandings are, but basically, there are things that we agree that we want to have included in all of our content areas or within a content area. So, we really focused on what's contained within a quality lesson and/or in some cases, units of instruction. So, an example here that's up on the screen in front of you deals with mathematics. And you'll notice that there's two, two different graphics there, one with a little more detail. Basically, what this is saying is it doesn't matter what grade level a student is in, it doesn't matter which classroom that child is in. There will be an element of real-world application, procedural skill fluency, and conceptual understanding that leads to an understanding of reasoning with mathematics present within all units. Now, we may have a day that we focus a little bit more on procedural skill fluency than some of the other areas, but over the course of a unit, that's going to be there. And as it relates to the specific standards within an area, that's going to get to the depth that we're looking for. The second graphic up there for mathematics gives you some specific examples of what that might mean. So, what does it mean for procedural skill fluency? You can kind of work your way through that. Then, as we go through, again, we did this for each of those areas that we've completed our program reviews and our process that we use. We either started with our instructional coaches and then worked through our math and our literacy teams and the content area teachers within those areas to provide feedback on this process. Or in some cases, we started right with the team if we didn't have an instructional coach in that area. Right now, as a district, we have a literacy coach and a math coach. We don't have coaches in those other areas. So, after our program reviews, I would be the one that would then be tasked with putting together some ideas, sending it back to the team, getting some input, tweaking some wording, those types of things, and going back and forth. And then, as we move forward. So, this year, knowing that we had a new science resource, we really focused in on that. The second page of that document goes through and really, it kind of explains what each one of those pieces are. Social studies standards are new this year. I brought those drafts forward to this board at one point in time to provide some input, so you've seen this before. And then, as we go through, when we think about the work we've been doing with ACP, Academic and Career Planning, and Career and Technical Education, you can see that this exists for there. Programs are currently under review right now. Our social studies department is using the document that was created to help guide their process. World Language is another program that's in review. They'll have one of these by the end of the year as well. We'll work our way through each of those content areas. One piece that I'm pretty excited about that came directly out of the Model Schools Conference, that you actually are the first audience to see this on a large scale as we go through. When we talk about relevance and we talk about the soft skills of 21st century learning, you know, there's anywhere from seven to 13 skills that are usually identified. And this is a piece that we went through and we took a look to say, all right, if we break those into three main areas, they tend to be categorized around learning skills, life skills, and literacy skills, and what are those? We will be meeting with our Model Schools delegation that went last year. We'll be meeting with that team in November. This is a piece of the conversation where we'll be getting some input from them based off of their takeaways and then rolling this forward to help guide our process. So, really, the idea is to have some shared understandings as to what it is that we're hoping to achieve with our students as they go through the process. I really see this 21st century skill when you take a look at what the workforce is requesting of preparatory programs and even, you know, K-12 education. These are the things right now that they're saying they're looking for. So, as we look at this, this really starts to bring context to each of those content areas and tie those pieces together. So, if there are any questions, I'm happy to entertain those, but really, when we start to take a look at kind of those next steps, you know, really, our community up to this point has said we're committed to a whole child experience. And I feel that this really helps set the stage for us getting there.
Questions?
Well, people are thinking about questions. I just want to reiterate, I think this is a big deal. And I remember sitting down, boy, it's probably three years ago now, with Brian and Tara and Michelle are reading, are reading, and math coaches. And I said, okay, so, give it to me and, you know, one paragraph, what is it that we're trying to do with math? And it gets so complicated so quick. And I think if you go to a second grade teacher, say, okay, so what are we doing with math? And, or a 10th grade teacher. And then you start talking about the different subject areas. I just, I really think that that's an area in education that we can really make some progress is by having a better, more common vision for what we're trying to do. And granted, this isn't, you know, what happens with the teachers and the kids, that's primary. At the same time, if we're all moving in the same direction and we keep that momentum going, I really think that this has got some big potential. So, again, I really appreciate the work that's been done on that. I envision this, once they're finalized, I envision this having them up in the boardroom here. I envision this having it in the classrooms. Because we need to get beyond just, you know, the curriculum coaches or the curriculum director or some of the lead teachers having a real clear shared vision. The more that we can all have the shared vision of what we're trying to accomplish, the better off we're going to be. So, thank you, Brian, for your work. Are there any questions at this point?
I just had one. I think you answered it. How long you've been working on this? It sounds like three years you've been working on this model.
Yeah, yeah. It really started with the math and the reading. And now, it's kind of taken off and it's been timed with some of the reviews that Brian talked about. I see this as a process that is going to do nothing but benefit. It's not a silver, or I should say, you know, silver bullet type of thing, but it does have the potential to be improved.
Do you think the conference from Florida helped and will, I'd say, begin this next year and do this?
I do. Really, when we took a look at the team that we took this summer, seeing some of the things that we already were doing was reassuring to them. But then, as we came back and talked about what are some of the things that those high-performing districts from around the nation were doing? It's that clear understanding and that shared vision of direction of what it is that they're doing that came through. And like Joe said, we started this with math and literacy and we had some work to do there. You know, that was something that we reviewed as part of this process in getting ready for this evening was that work that we did, you know, three, four years ago, did that still ring true? Were there any tweaks that need to be made? And what I will say is, you know, as we move forward with that process, really helping to, you know, move this forward is having that, something that's easily digestible regardless of content area. So, you see the continuity between the content areas and that connection.
Dave, if I could add, I think it's so easy to get into the weeds on this because everyone's so passionate about the different areas of curriculum. So, like, again, if you talk to a second grade teacher, but what are you doing in math? I mean, they will give you down to the last detail because our teachers are terrific. At the same time, you know, generally, you know, if we can't share with our parents in a paragraph or a document, you know, one pager, if we don't have that common understanding, I think we get into the weeds and we kind of get lost. To me, that's one thing that the Model Schools Conference taught us is that we can get lost in that Quad A very easily. You know, Quad A is where we're talking about, you know, lower-level information being assessed in lower-level ways. You know, we're trying to get to Quad D where we're talking higher-level information being applied in real-life situations. And I think by having this more shared vision, it'll help us get there. I do think we're doing a lot of good things already. And I think this, this is very well alignment with those efforts.
Brian, I want to say that I am impressed with this. I think you're doing a wonderful job. Those, getting those clear understandings is, is important. Keep everybody moving in the same direction. We all want that. And I'm impressed with the confidencefulness, including the soft skills here that you have in all of the series. I think, many. Any other questions? Thank you. All right. Moving on, discussion of the 2019-2020 district calendar.
So, this is very preliminary. Really, this is just the beginning of the discussion. But as we begin the discussion, and we'll be meeting with the QIC groups in December, I just wanted to have the opportunity for the board to see a calendar that would be somewhat in line with what we've done over several years. You'll note that there is a spring break in the original draft. It's aligned with UW-South's spring break. That's probably the number one question that we get when we start talking about calendar. We still are bound by the state law, which does not allow us to begin before September 1st. And then, when we look at scheduling, the number of student days that we typically have, the number of teacher contract days, professional development days, this is kind of what the initial draft would look like. And before we get too far into it, and too far down the line, I wanted to see if the board has any special directions or special parameters as we begin the discussions about next year's school calendar. Anything tonight? I know we spent a lot of time the last few years looking at it and I'm not surprised there's not a lot of changes, but it's all important to re-sprint it out. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, annual fee and reduced meal eligibility report.
So, each year, Leah brings this report forward. And Leah, if you could please summarize it to that rate.
Okay, so each year, October 31st is our official free and reduced meals count. It's the same every year. If you take a look at the report, you'll see it's broken down by building. Each building has an increase over last year. You'll notice we're at 39.14% as of October 31st this year compared to 34.22%. So, our free and reduced count is up. MAP is the highest. We're at 44.23% compared to 33.11. This count is used for our Title I eligibility services. And you'll, you have, each building has to be at least 35% or higher to qualify. And you'll notice MAP and O'Conde, Downsville, River Heights, and Middle School all qualify again this year. They also qualified last year. So, we do this count each month, even though this is our official count, we're allowed to pick any month out of the school year to take that snapshot and turn it in for our qualifications. So, we, we keep looking at the numbers each month throughout the year and then we pick our highest month and use those numbers. Does anyone have any questions?
What's done in regards to spending home reform? Like how, you know, some of these schools, and I'm going way back, Lori. When Oban was, I remember, in a book fair that we helped educate parents about how to fill it out and what things need to do. So, I was just curious, the ones, the schools that are just toeing the line, what's done to be able to perhaps help them and be able to advocate their families better?
Sure. We have applications available in the office. You have to be careful not to take a group and over-identify. So, we have to be careful when we hand those applications out and how that process is handled. So, we do have them in the office. We kind of have to wait for families to come and request the information.
Do they have to come here? They can't go to their own schools?
No, they can go to their schools too. We just, we don't leave it sit out like on the school office on the counter or something like that just because someone could be over-identified. So, parents do have to kind of specifically request it.
So, like in the, in all the paper, like when the school kicks off, like is that form not within there? Or like that parent teacher conferences, it is? Okay, okay.
Tonya, could you grab your microphone, please? And then maybe mention what you're extra to also.
We can't, like parents have conferences, we couldn't have a table designated to free and reduced applications. Because then the family- and reduced applications because then the families that are approaching that table would be identified as families in need of that support. So we could have a table, which we do lots of different information, and free and reduced applications can be part of that table, but it can't be a separate table in itself. Does that make sense? But there's, it's very, it's very regulated and there's lots of rules about how we can and cannot identify. Now, if one of our guided staff is speaking with a family, knowing that, that situation of the family, they can ask the family if they would like information on that, help families complete that if they know other information. But we can't necessarily seek out particular families and say, I want to identify you as a family in need of career opportunities.
They can't send it to everybody?
We did. We do send it to everybody at the beginning of the school year. And even last year, we did send out some, I think even Joe, how he sent tweets out about if you're in need of this service, please contact your school, your friends somewhere. And then there are families that are automatically identified depending on if they, some families that qualify for other services outside of the school district are automatically identified as families that qualify for free and reuse. And that's, we call it a direct cert. So we run direct cert quite frequently and so families show up on that, they are automatically free and reduced. Now, families can opt out of that if they so choose to. But if they come out as in a direct cert, they don't even need to fill out an application. They're automatically identified.
Does the 35% been staying the same year over year for a school to be eligible?
Yes.
And has there been some years when it was district wise versus school wise? Like if the, the district average was 39 and everybody, all the schools got, got it, even if they fell between 33 or below the 35? Or it has to be?
No, each individual school has to meet that.
Any other questions? Thanks, Leah. Thanks, Tonya.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on. Data set for mid-year budget hearing.
So the last couple of years, we've had mid-year, mid-year budget hearing. And really, we talk about the budget in a little more detail, providing some longitudinal data. And last year, we had it before the regular meeting in January, the corresponding date for that. This year would be January 14. We get through in about a half hour, so a five o'clock start would be okay if board members are okay with that idea. Okay, we'll book it.
Okay, moving on. App strategic planning update.
There isn't a whole lot to report since the last meeting. However, on October 22nd, after the school board meeting, we then had the steering committee meeting and the steering committee group started going through the results of the digital survey. Also, the digital survey for students was open and it looks like a total of 261 students took the survey, so we're happy about that. Right now, student education, our partners in this project are going through the data and preparing reports. And as those reports are done, the steering committee will be meeting again this winter and starting to put together the framework of a plan. Any questions tonight?
Were you, I think at the last steering committee, there were some folks who were wondering if they could, could have another steering committee meeting for, for when that's scheduled? Has that been discussed or?
Yeah, I think that night, Joanne said it really depends on how the generation of the data goes. I, I think she was perhaps gonna send out some reports and have people do some individual work on those, but no, we have not been made aware of any other data at this point.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Moving on. Item G, discuss policy 165, board member ethical standards. Okay, I, I contacted Joe and Dan earlier and asked for this item to be placed on the agenda. And I guess there's some, some history. One of the things I, you know, I feel I have an obligation as a board member to talk about some of this stuff. And I'm just going to say it. Last week or a couple weeks ago, the school board members received a email from the Menominee Cares Group from Orange Land. And they were disappointed, disheartened, disheartened at the enormous sum of money that we were spending on sports complex lighting and sound system. So I talked or contacted Warren and asked if this viewpoint was representative of the entire committee and if the committee as a whole decided to send out this email. He assured me that the committee did vote. And now, Dan, you're also a member of this committee, the Menominee Cares Group as well, correct?
I was, and unfortunately, I wasn't at that meeting to represent the board. I was ill and home in bed. And I really did not, I'm sorry, I did, I really wasn't paying much attention to what was going on with them until I felt much better. I'm sorry, I dropped the ball on that one. I should have been there to, to express the board's decision, how we made our decision and supported that. But it's not good.
So can I just ask, sorry, Tandra, are you going to ask a question there? Okay. So are, when you're on that committee, the Menominee Cares Committee, are you there as a member of the Menominee Cares or as a board member?
I was a member of that committee long before I was on the board. So I've been asked to be kind of the liaison. So basically, when I'm there and we're discussing issues regarding the board, I speak for myself because I'm not at the board. So I can only speak for myself, but when there's issues brought up, I try to explain as best as I can what, what I know about it.
So, okay, with that being said, when I was first elected to the school board, the middle school, and I'm sorry, I always mess up the name, the Menominee Middle School Alliance Parent Guardian Group had reached out to me and asked if I could come as a board member just to give an update, to have that communication. Long story short, the, it was brought to a board meeting here and I was asked to not participate as a board member, so I stopped. But that was, you know, one meeting that I was there was one and done. So if that happened to me, I think that should have been brought forward ahead of time as you as the representative of Menominee Cares as a board member. Well, sorry to. No, I'm, I'm. Well, and, and then you just said you were ill, so you couldn't speak as a board member. So I guess I'm backing up what Heather said. Either you're a board member or you're a committee member, you're not both. And I think, you know, with the board, sorry, David, don't make it.
No, I'm trying.
Sorry. You know, looking at the policy, you know, there's a lot of information that I'm learning that board members are aware of that other board members are not. And I will say, it's, it's not knowing that that was your role as a dual member. I mean, when we talked about for myself, we said if somebody wants to be elected to participate in that Menominee group, that was fine. But we had all decided as a board to just forego it. And then I communicated that with, that group that unfortunately would not be able to attend as a board member, but, so I guess I'm just, I don't know what the right word is here, that you've been a board member on this group, the Menominee Cares Group, for quite some time and representing, even though it's your voice, that, that does concern me.
I, can I ask a question?
Yes.
So like, Tanya and I are founding members of the Parent Guardian Alliance. So we're not supposed to be.
But you're a parent. So when I was elected as a board member, the very first question I asked Joe was, could I participate in PTO for Oakland? Because that was, you know, I was part of the Oakland PTO. And he said yes, as long as we keep that all separate. So that's how I always go about it when I'm at the meetings, is that I am there as a parent because I'm a parent in a school. And then I also make it well known when I talk with individuals what hat I'm wearing, if I'm wearing my stout hat, if I'm wearing my school board hat, if I'm wearing my parent hat, or the Heather hat. So I think you're fine in my perspective, but. I have attended, not this year so much, but the previous year, I attended the Parent Guardian Middle School Alliance as a parent. And that was my role, was to be there as an advocate for my, at the time, seventh grader, not as a school board member.
I guess, follow up, Dan, if you weren't at the meeting, how did they get their information? To make the decision and to send out the letter?
Well, how would he know if he's not there?
That's why I'm asking. If he's part of the committee, does he know? You know, Jim, you're, you're hard to pass on structure and policy and that.
And I understand, I just, it just like you already said, he's not there, so how would he know? You know, I guess that was, I just, to your question being answerable.
But David's question was, and maybe I was wrong, was if Dan was not at the Menominee Cares meeting, how were they aware of what happened at the board meeting if Dan was not there to give an update? And then also, how come we didn't?
We get filmed, we get nuked, we get the leak that didn't tell the news, we had believe the telegram, we had people that were here. I mean, you don't exactly operate in secret.
No. And I'm not saying it's secrecy.
So I mean, that's, you know, I'm just saying, there's like a million ways to get that information if he's not there. I mean.
Let me just finish one of my thoughts. I wish the Cares Committee had taken into consideration, you know, the $1 to $2 million that we put into Fund 73, Fund 46, this last year. When they talked about the $125,000 to $175,000 that was earmarked towards the sports complex, that might be up to two years before that money is available for that. Depends on when they come up with the fundraising. We added a social worker position in our district this past year. We added a, started a program with Stout to help with their mental health needs. Added a part-time music position at Middle School just recently as well. And some of early strategic planning information we've talked about is talk about the need for mental health in our district, the increased need for that. We've talked as a board about the possibility of adding staff at the elementary and possibly middle school positions to cover some of that in the future. And so if they have that information that they wrote about, they should also have everything else that I just mentioned because that's also been mentioned publicly at meetings. So I'm disappointed that Menominee Cares took the position that they did. And I guess, Dan, my position with you is that as board president, you have an obligation, even more of an obligation as board president to convey our thoughts if you're involved with a group like that. What the position of the board was, we'll make our vote, if it's five to four, that's the position of the board, whether you're the minority or the majority, that's the position of the board. And we all, as board members, have an obligation to carry out that responsibility. We had another incident with the Community Foundation where you contacted them and asked about funding levels and how much they had raised in the past year towards the sports complex. And I'm not sure how, but you got some inaccurate information through that process. In my opinion, that, things like that should be run through Joe so that we can streamline the information, make sure it's accurate before we come to a board meeting. We just happen to have a couple here that was very involved with that and I think they took offense at the way it was presented after the work they had done on that. There's also been questions directed towards the lead team about, you know, towards Leah about fund balance and things like that that were inaccurate. I wish more of this stuff was directed through the superintendent so that the information could come out in a uniform way instead of trying to play gotcha with, with some of the lead team members. And there's also been other instances where you work independently of the administration with either Stout or other organizations or contact with families and things like that outside of the administration. I think, in my opinion, that undermines the administration when, when you do that as board president, because being board president carries a lot of responsibility and a lot of authority, whether you're in the boardroom or on your own, meeting with people or things like that. I think, from my perspective, that needs to be handled differently. So the way this has come about is looking at policy 165 ethical standards of board members and how that pertains to management.
I think to kind of more or less sum up with what Dave just said, if you look at policy 165 and the second section, number seven, bear in mind under all circumstances that the primary function of the board is to establish the policies by which the school, schools are administered, but that the administration of the educational program and the conduct of the school business shall be left to the employed district administrator and his or her professional and non-professional staff. And I think we're crossing, I think there's a lot to be crossed.
Moving on, corporate funding information. Could I answer that question you asked?
I don't believe that this would be the way to do this, but thank you very much. Community foundation. I met with executive director. If I, if you think I, I just represented what she said, I think you need to talk to her and ask her what she told you. I believe you 100%. What she told you is what you reported, but I just feel that that should have been ran through Joe instead of something that the board president is doing. I think that should be Joe's responsibility to get that information, ensure the accuracy of it. That's all they are. I just think that by you doing it on your own, you're circumventing the administration. It just makes it tough. I don't, if you're running a business or whatever it is, everything has, you have policies and structure to how things are done. And if you go outside of that, it creates problems. I don't care if it's in our business at home or whatever it is. If I got an employee that's all of a sudden talking to a vendor and saying, you know, I want to do this or I want to do that, I get a little hot under the collars, they're not following, you know, things have to come through, through us.
Hey, but the school board position is slightly different than running a business.
It is, it is.
And as a, and as a school board member, we are approached by all kinds of community vendors constantly telling us things or, or, you know, asking us questions or whatever. So I mean, it's, it's not, you know, I guess it's not as clear line like you're trying to.
It wouldn't be an approach, an approach to different things.
And, and so I think, you know, you gotta be careful here because, I mean, I don't think Dan ended on anything wrong, but I think that our, our role as school members is much broader than, you know, you've been, I've been wearing my last, what was it called? Retreat. You know, we learned, yeah, one of our jobs is to evaluate programs, write policy and also be evaluated. And then all this really falls under those three categories. I don't see anything he's doing that truly doesn't fall under those three categories. So I.
If you were a board president, Jim, do you think you'd have known all of these?
I don't know. I'm not a board president.
David, so what you're telling me is that I should only ask Joe for information?
If it can, if it's about the school board or school district and that, I think your, your information channel should go through Joe. Granted, you're going to have conversations with people, but the cases, the things that I pointed out were where you were actively contacting different partners that the school district is working with or things like that requesting information. To me, that's going outside the channel. I think if you have a request like that, run it through Joe to get that information.
Why do I need control of this? Why can't I get independent information?
Because I think you circumvent. Because I think you circumvent the process and how...
What process?
Number seven.
Well, not even that. Where, and I don't have this on my eyes, but I, my understanding is I was supposed to have similar knowledge, and that was not having similar coming into me to be on that. So nobody was shared any of that. So if you want to go and find out information to help all of us, then I think all of us should have been able to have that information prior to the start of the meeting.
I agree, yes. And one of the things I looked at that precipitated this, I don't know when the school board, from a leadership role, if there's any, I didn't see anything in the policy that says that, you know, you can change leadership or things like that. And so I guess, I don't know what, I would like a little bit of research to be done on that. Not necessarily in this case, maybe, I don't know. I'd like the stuff to stop, but I'd like to know what our options were, I guess, if there's...
I would also like to raise up that a few weeks ago, I have been, and Dan has been aware of this, at the center of online harassment by a particular community member. And this individual, I felt like picked me out of the whole school board, but stood up for another school board person because of their friendship outside. And what I learned from, in a roundabout way, was what that school board member shared was the same thing that I shared with this person. I do not, it was, yeah, it was real hard three weeks with this individual. And I questioned also the leadership, not just you, Dan, but everyone's leadership that was, that is right now with the school board. So I appreciate the, you know, steps that you took, but it is still out there. I mean, my name is still associated with that. And to attack me personally and then impact my family, that's about where I draw the line. And I, you know, I also did some research to try to find leadership change within the school board, but could not find anything for that. So I will publicly state that I have looked into this because of the level of attack that I received and the, I was going to say, actions that flowed towards of the individuals that reached out to me or did not reach out to me on the board when I was going through this situation, so.
I guess I will just say, to me, it's nothing personal. When I walk out of this boardroom, I consider everybody on this board my friend. But it's more a structure and how we operate as a board, and how it affects the, how our actions in the boardroom and outside the boardroom affect the administration, the lead team, building principals, teachers. Everything we do has an action or reaction one way or the other. And I just think that we need to be careful about what we do. I would ask that Joe look into at least what the possibilities are, the standpoint of leadership change on the board. And if there's nothing, then that's what it is. But I'd like to know. I don't know how to go about it, so.
I guess the issue with the Menominee Cares is difficult, because on the diversity community, I've been, I'm asked to report about them. And Joe visited with the Menominee Cares Group and recognized that I'm on board and I'm there. And so I'm, I'd be happy to basically, publicly, just, I can, I can just associate myself with Menominee Cares. I hate to do that, but if that presents a conflict of interest and the board feels that that is a problem, then I can certainly, I mean, I also...
Before you go on, Dan, I'm not saying that it is. I don't know for sure. All I'm saying is that when you are a part of that group, you have to represent the board with the board's feelings as a whole. That's all I'm saying.
Well, I would even go as far and say, I'm with you, David. I mean, I don't want you to lead that group. I think it's a great group, but I think you should be there as Daniel Paulson community member.
Right.
And if that, if that group wants a school board representative, then I think we should vote on who should be represented at that meeting.
But I think this goes deeper than just Menominee Cares. It goes with stepping outside of bounds and representing yourself as a school board member and/or the president to other, like Dave said, business partners, organizations, and getting information to go again back to what Tanya said, that the rest of the board does not have, or a board of nine. And that's what's most important.
I don't understand what you meant by the first part you're saying, but...
What don't you understand? Because I would love to clarify.
Representing myself as the board president or...
Well, when you call Stout or CBTC or the Community Foundation, you aren't calling as, you're not calling as a whole. We do not discuss as a board, we think you should call the Community Foundation and see what's happening with this money. But you're playing a dual role, and you're not handling it with kid gloves probably like I think that you should. That's my opinion. That's very much my personal opinion. But you're getting information that the other eight of us don't have, and you're not sharing that information.
Some of that I don't, I don't know what you're talking about, but that is me.
I think, I think what she's trying to say is that, you know, when you contact someone, this is what I do personally, and I did it with Joel. When you're contacting someone, I start off my email, I'm contacting you today as Daniel Paulson, the community member, or I'm contacting you today as Daniel Paulson, the school board representative. I mean, that's how I've learned to address my emails, if I'm emailing from an account that I typically don't. I mean, I have one for school, I have one for work, and I have one for personal, so. But I still, I think that's what Patty's trying to just say, is like, you're starting off and saying, I'm contacting you today as Daniel Paulson. And if you're contacting them as a school board, you're not, what Patty's, I think, trying to say is that you're not being directed from the whole board to contact them.
Yep. And it's not just emails. It's phone calls, it's any type of communication. It's man on the street. You know, I, I can give examples where I'm going into the principals of the middle school or the elementary school when I'm dealing with situations with my kid, where I say, I'm coming in as Penny Burston, parent and community member. This is my concern. My student is having an issue with that, how do I fix it? Versus, yeah, Penny Burston. That leaves it very wide and very odd. And too bright, just too bright.
Well, again, I'm not sure what particular situations you're speaking of, other than talking with the executive director of the Community Foundation. But I'll take the essence of what you're saying.
David brought up asking me to look into, because we do not have a board policy on board leadership, except for the reorganizational meeting. To me, this is a board issue, this is not an administrative issue. And as superintendent, I do not feel it's my place to get in the middle of this type of concern. However, working for the board in terms of getting legal advice, that is something I can do, but I would want to know that that's what the board wants me to look into, not just one board member. Because again, this is a board issue.
I would be for all positions.
I agree.
I as well.
Can you talk louder, please?
I said I agree with, I would like Joe to pursue, or whatever he said, I would like it to be looked into for all positions, leadership positions on the board.
So I...
I would agree.
So I have a clarification question. So the attorney would look into the state statute, is that what...
Yeah, state statutes, any other applicable law that would direct us in terms of what the options for the board would be. I do not, you know, I got, again, I received Dave's agenda request, I do not feel like it was appropriate for the superintendent based on one board member's agenda request to investigate that information. So we have, I have not done that. But I think that for a majority of the board, John, do you have an opinion whether or not you'd like this investigated? I think it'd be relevant. Hey, Jim? Tanya?
Yep.
I'm sorry, that was, must be getting late. Tanya, yes. Tricia? Dana?
Sure.
Okay, then I will contact the School Board Association, and for the next meeting, there'll be the board of information about what the law is in regard to this information and the situation.
Thank you.
I ask one more question. Would this be something to discuss at the upcoming retreat?
I hope so. When is the retreat to get out?
December 4th.
Before December meeting. Your kids are... I would think so.
On each review of items related to the next meeting date, board committees, reports.
And I see that we need to add that December 4th retreat into the list of upcoming events. But the next board meeting is November 26th.
I have a question about the November, what are we doing this number of days? I looked at the meeting. It's just one meeting, huh?
Nobody wants to come during holidays.
Or Christmas. I love you guys, but no.
Last year was the 25th or something, or Christmas Day.
Yeah, this year's the 24th. Generally, Tricia, if we have a meeting that falls over spring break or a major holiday, a lot of times we go to one meeting. However, if there's too much information or information that is timely, then we would schedule a special meeting on a different date. That may require some action to occur at the second meeting of the month that typically would be reserved for the first meeting of the month. We do try to plan ahead as much as possible.
Okay, closed session. Action to move to post...
Take a break.
We need to take a break. Tanya?
Yep. Sorry.